Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our board meeting tonight. I would like to call this meeting for order. I need adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda for November 21st, 2022.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lapine?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Oh.
Miller is supposed to be on the phone, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Miller.
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion has been...
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Ashley. Thank you. The motion... Huh?
I can't hear her. I'm just kidding.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
The motion has been second and approved. I need a motion to approve the minutes from October 17th, 2022, regular board meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the minutes from October 17th, 2022, board meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion's been approved. We will now have public input. We have three names on the list. Mr. Bagan Durant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity for the public input. Last time I was here, I talked about Kaufman Road. I'm glad to see some improvements were made. I'm very happy. I think some more still can be made. Still going to be a point by the tennis courts. I'm disappointed that I still have to drive to Park Lane for my kid to play tennis.
Can I ask you to speak into my mic?
Sure. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm still disappointed I have to drive to Park Lane for my kid to go play tennis when there's a tennis court that's less than five minutes away. My question is that all we have is somebody to work with the USTA to get grants to get those tennis courts back up to where they should be. Ten years, 15 years ago, it was packed with people that played tennis on any given day. What happened? Number two, I'm still concerned about the walkway at Kaufman Road. It's grout. It's cement. Why can't we get that synthetic pavement that walks around? If you look in the morning, there's plenty of seniors in the afternoon that walk around there. Number two, the third most important point is that I saw those baseball fields getting shut down, and I think it's some type of maintenance. I just want to know what is the maintenance that's being done? Overall, I think there's a lot of parts and the funding needs to go to upgrades, whether it's inside doing the racket courts or whether it's office. There's a lot of people in that community that use that Kaufman Road. It's one of the business ones that's there. Not only Kaufman Road, Gaston, Eastover, there are things that can be made. There are grants that'll be made to be out there. You have a lot of after-school programs. My kid, my kids attended both of them. Why not reach out to some of these foundations like the Verizon Foundation, which has an $18,000 a year grant? Or either with Cisco or Amazon. These organizations have grants that these kids can benefit from STEM-based programs. It's simple. This organization does a lot. And I want to make sure that we reach out to these other entities if the funding's not available from the county to get these funding so the kids in the after-school programs can actually benefit from STEM-based programs. If they can learn how to throw a football or a baseball, whatever the case may be, what's the science behind it? Another thing I would encourage also to encourage, work with our local colleges. Benedict College has one of the, Benedict College has one of the, has the only HBCU that has a gaming console. Why not work with Benedict College to get these kids? If they, if they, if they're going to play John Madden and all these other games, why not find the science behind it? That's where that STEM grant, grant comes from. Number two, I found out that simply we have other people that are coming out of state to use our facilities. I met a guy in Orlando two months ago that said he, I told him I was from Columbia. He said, "Oh, you guys have a great facility at Bluff Road. We're, we have people that come from out of town to use our facilities, but we can't upgrade our other facilities." That's unacceptable. That, that is truly unacceptable. I believe in sports. I believe in recreation. And I'm gonna talk about one young man that made an impact. His name is Keishon King. He is from South Carolina. Go look him up. He went to Liberty High School in Picking, South Carolina. He came here for state championships. He was three times short jumper for two A. But he wasn't good enough for Clemson University, which was in his backyard. He got a call from Stanford University. He had to fly 3,000 miles away. Now he's a graduate of Stanford University. He was an inch away from being an Olympian. Now he's at Texas Tech getting his master's degree. That kind of story inspires people. So that's why I'm harping on getting funding for these, for these infrastructures. If a kid that was in Liberty, South Carolina, which is a small school, two A school, he didn't get off from Clemson, which is less than 10 minutes away from his house, but yet his Stanford degree that he, he earned in three and a half years during a pandemic, that shows the power of sports. And I'm committed to that. So what I'm asking this committee to do, make sure that we fund these facilities. Let's upgrade these facilities. Upgrade your technology. Take care of your people that run these facilities as well. Because my kids can be all over the place, but the people at Kaufman Road know my kids. They know them by name. My last point is simply this. Look for those STEM-based grants. These kids can learn a lot in the after-school programs from these STEM-based grants. Horizon Foundation, Cisco, Amazon. I've already saw, I read research. You need help doing the grants. Let me know. I'll reach out to them. Let's use our recent colleges that we have. Because if these kids can play games and do things, have them know, never know who John Madden is, but why not just show them how to design their own Madden games? That's all I'm asking. So what I'm asking from this board is to completely support our employees at Richland County Park for Recreation. But I'm also asking for the infrastructure. Five years ago, when things were, were cost less. Now it's gonna be even more. So let's please fund these parks so we can get the infrastructure the way they should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Durant. Unfortunately, county council cut our budget. And actually, I think maybe we need to approach them to get more funds because they're the ones who fund us. And that's how we were able to renovate the new Park Lane Tennis Court here. So I'm sure that the staff is actually looking for grants to help, because that's the only funding that we can get. But someone should get back to you.
USTA does have a grant.
I'm sorry?
USTA helped us with the grant for Park Lane.
Right.
And then we got a big, a large amount from Richland County. You're correct about that. But what happened is USTA helped us. So whoever our grant people are, they could definitely help out. And I wanted to say that, Mr. Durant, those are great comments. So thank you very much for coming to our meeting. Appreciate it.
DeAndre Outen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here representing Park Lane Road Enrichment Committee. And the things that we, we would like to discuss tonight is the cost of living raised and the longevity paid for the staff. Till we learn to take care of our own, we can fix up any park we want to. But if we're not taking care of the people that's running the park, we won't have anyone to be here to see that the programs go forward. So we are really concerned about the pay raises that need to be given to the people that are making almost minimum wages to be here. So we wanted to bring that to your attention and see what we can have happen for these people because they work hard. And they have extra duties added to them and getting little pay. So if you don't take care of your own, you're not gonna keep the staff. They're gonna eventually start leaving us to go elsewhere. And we don't want that because we have such a great staff with us. The other thing I wanted to talk about is security for the technology centers. You have two centers that I know of. Park Lane, the James Clyburn Technology Center, and the one on Garnett's Ferry. And last I checked, you only have one female working those centers all day long by themselves. I had asked seven years ago for the board to look into putting an extra person there, especially at, when it's dark. Park Lane Road is very hot. Whether you all know it or realize it or not, we have a high crime rate in this area. And it is very dangerous to have one female at each center by themselves, and it's dark, coming out to the cars, and there's no security. So that's a major... What are we gonna do about this? How are we gonna protect these workers? And it's unfair. And you know, she can't even go to the restroom properly or get her lunch properly. You have to send someone from Park Lane Recreation Center over to the tech center to relieve her for lunch. That, to me, that is an accident waiting to happen.
Thank you. We do have a security staff. So maybe we can make sure that that person is, checks over to the technology center. I'm not sure.
And we're in the process of hiring staff for work technology.
Sorry?
We're in the process of hiring staff for technology, part-time staff to assist with those chores.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, did you hear that? Okay. We have the process of hiring a visible staff, and here we are today, no additional staff. And as far as security is concerned, yes, a security person could be in this building, but if something happened, protect them. How would they know?
The third person on the list is absent. Ms. Roach did not sign in.
Did you make a statement, Madam Security?
I was just letting you know the third person, Ms. Barbara Roach, is absent. She did not sign in.
She's not here. I'm asking that, oh, let's see. That we do check on the staffing and security at these areas. Fortunately, we haven't had anything happen yet, but we have to look out for the future. So we will address that, Ms. Allen. Thank you. When the young man stopped the person over at the gas station and ran, I could text in and try to get in there, luckily he just walked away. Thank you. We're gonna look into it and get back with you. Next, we'll have the financial report.
Good evening, Chair Lindsay. Members of the Commission Board. I'd like to begin tonight by providing you with an update on the general and enterprise fund financials for the period of July 1, 2022 through October 31st, 2022. Starting with the general fund revenues. Total revenues for the four-month period were 1.1 million compared to 1.4 million around this time last year. Represents approximately $361,000 decrease in revenues or approximately 24.9% decrease. The, the driver for that increase was the timing of the property tax revenue allocation. RCRC's property tax, it has a decrease for the current fiscal year due to the value of the mill. And just keep in mind, RCRC receives the vast majority of property tax revenues during the final two quarters of the fiscal year. I did provide two additional reports at Commissioner Lapine's request illustrating that, that trend. The, the first report that, that was attached, it has three years of historical data showing through October and then comparing that to fiscal year end. If you look at those figures, you will see that, you know, we typically operate at a deficit through October. But once we received those property tax revenues, you know, we did end each of those previous fiscal years, you know, solidly in the black.
I have a question. Actually, we should be getting another check in January. Is that correct?
Yeah. There's another report that actually shows the, the allocations that we receive broken out by month going back three years. And you can see that we received the bulk of those property tax revenues in January and February. We, we did receive actually today a check, you know, and so that will be reflected in next, next month's report.
I'm sorry, Ryan. I'm confused. We received a check today?
We did.
Okay.
Yep.
Amount.
It was a little over $200,000. And that'll be in the November report. But that, that report that I provided, it does show the breakdown by month and the percentages of the total property tax allocation that we received on a monthly basis. And that, and you will see that, you know, the, the bulk is typically received in January or February. Program revenues for the four-month period were 329, I'm sorry, 320.9,000 compared to 280.8,000 around this time last year. Represents approximately $40,000 increase in revenues or approximately a 14.3% increase. Parks and rental revenue was the largest driver for the increase from this time last year. General fund expenditures for the four-month period were 4.8 million compared to 4.6 million this time last year. Represents approximately 3.4% increase or $155,000. The biggest driver for that increase would be fleet expenses and IT expenses. Fleet is largely related to the increased cost of fuel that, that we experienced in the, the first four months of the year as well as repairs and supplies, supply expenses. And the IT expenses, that was mainly related to Cronos licensing and Retract card reader purchases for implementation, implementation of the new Retract system. For enterprise fund, revenues for the current period were $390,000 compared to $366,000 this time last year. Represents approximately 6.6% increase or $24,000. Green and range fees and cart rental revenue was largely the driver for this increase. And total enterprise fund expenditures for this period were $325,000 compared to $341,000 this time last year. Represents approximately 4.9% decrease or $17,000. The biggest fluctuation was capital outlay expenditures as well as general golf operating costs. Were there any questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I do, I do want to thank you for the additional report that explains the property tax revenue. That was always, it's nice to see it broken down by month. So thank you.
Not a problem. Happy to provide it.
Ryan?
Yeah.
So I guess this falls under your area. Mika can chime in if she wants, but I talked to you about it's getting close to the end of this year and wanted to see where we stood with potentially getting that cost of living increase for the employees.
Yes.
To Mika, actually, had, she was going to provide an update on that.
I figured, just finance.
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll do that. All right.
Thank you. So yes, at the last meeting, you asked about that we go back to see if there's an option for us to provide staff raises in this fiscal year and also inquired about what the state and the county actually did. So the state had received a 3% raise and the county employees had received a 3% raise as they hadn't had a raise since 2019. So they decided to do that this year. We did review our current budget and with staff vacancies that we've had across the board in all the divisions, we did have some cost savings in our salary line items that will allow us to do a 2% raise come January 2023. So we will be able to do a 2%. But with that in mind, we know that going forward, when we work on our fiscal year '24 budget, that employee wages, of course, will reflect that increase that was, that was changed. So we are able to do that from January.
So let me ask you this, and I'm just gonna be as blunt as I... I don't mean to be this blunt, but why can't we give them 3%? And I know you're probably gonna say you went through the budget. So, so a couple of questions. Can we go, just like Sheriff Lot went a couple of months, maybe six weeks ago to the county council and said that he would like to see raises for his sheriffs? Because the same situation that we ran into for his, his, his sheriffs and employees. If we need to do something like that, but I'd like to see us try to do 3% like the state and the county, you know, versus two, because two's not even keeping up with inflation. Then number two, I'd love it to happen. I don't know how we do it now, but I'd like it to be this year or as soon as we can. Like, but I mean, everybody's, you know, bills are up. And I mean, whether we have to go to county council and see them in a meeting to Mika and you need our support, or if Don Zeta needs to go there and petition for it in front of everybody, I'll ask her to do that. But we gotta try to do something as soon as we can, and that's all, that's all I'm asking. Didn't know your opinion on that.
And we did, we did look and see, and we said January because just looking at the vacancies, you know, we're trying to fill those as soon as possible, but we know for right now, we can at least do the, the 2%. As long as vacancies and, and salary line item is, is not filled, then that's when those funds will be open. So we're looking at what we have open right, do across the board.
Because a lot of money comes in, I noticed from Ryan's sheet, that 75% of our income comes in in January and February. So I do get that. But is there a way that we can get on the agenda at the county council to see what we can do to try to figure out a way to, you know what I'm saying, to get an extra percent to make up the difference and say, "Look, we're not filling these positions. We're giving two, but we really need to get it to three." And we get some money from them. Somehow, maybe there's a fund or something. I, I'm not that smart, but I just know that at least if we try, and everybody knows that we're trying, that would be a good thing.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget? Thank you, Ryan. President, we have no unfinished business. So we will go to new business. I have a motion under the new business discusses the policy. It's a new policy. Eight, zero, one, zero, and it's concerning our fee setting schedule.
Yes.
Board approved.
Yes, so it is a fee-setting process, schedule, fee-setting schedule policy. At the last board meeting, we approved the proposed fees that were, was scheduled and it was approved by the board. What you have in your packet is basically the current fee setting, the policy, and then the, which is the current one. And then we also have the draft one for your review. This policy was last updated in December of 16th, 2013. So it is here for your review, and it can be brought back to the next board meeting for approval if that's what you would desire.
No, I would like tonight to approve this mo, the new policy. I think we've all read it and agreed to it, and it doesn't make sense to come back in December to approve it when it's already done. We've already approved the fee increase schedule. So I'd like to have a motion to approve policy number eight, oh, one, oh.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
So in the policy, it says all fees are set by July 1st, right? But yet our budget, we approved on June. So what I'm saying is if we think that we're gonna need to make up the differential in our budget, maybe it makes sense to do it then, but I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
Yeah, so you know, because July 1 starts our new fiscal year, like those changes will go in effect. But that's why the clauses in there is, is subject to change throughout, but starting the new budget year.
So we would be aligned with the fiscal year, but then if there needed to be a change, it's still allowed reverberage and the policy still allows for that change? If that was the...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the policy eight, zero, one, zero fee setting schedule as outlined.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The policy has been second and approved. Next, we... The Inon Director's report.
Yes, so we have, you have actual information, the update for the projects we have for Kaufman Road Park. We have to get a contractor to come out and do the plumbing issues that resolve. We was working on the canteen, so you know, that's being renovated. And we are waiting on materials to replace our cabinets. Roofing updates, Firesgate Park, this project is expected to be completed by tomorrow. Kaufman Road Park, we need to get gutters added and then the project should be complete. And then for Meadow Lake, we need to finish our Meadow Basia that, and then that project will be complete. So our roofing projects have got started all at the same time, and so we're moving forward. And we're just about done with those three sites. Other items, we have vehicles that were sent to state auction on October the 24th. And so now we are waiting for them to be sold. And then lastly, Richland County had approved an award for various organizations to receive Opera Funds as a priority group. Our group was part of the priority group. So after completing the application, RCRC received the official award letter in the amount of $75,000. This money will be used for our general capital improvement projects. And the way this has to do, we have to, of course, incur the costs, and then we submit to the county for reimbursement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm excited. You know, I'm excited about the Opera Funds and $75,000. Are we going to be provided at some point with a list of proposed projects and completion?
Yes.
Of those projects?
Yes.
Okay. We're definitely looking forward to that.
And, and still, just to inform you, this is not part of what we submitted for the other two, which was the broadband, and we submitted for the youth and recreation services one. So this is not part of that. This is in addition to.
In the requests for the grant, did we prioritize projects or we just said generally speaking?
For the other two?
No, for the Opera Funds, the $75,000 we were awarded.
We did, general.
Thank you. I'd like to know what they, what it actually will be used for. I'd like to see recorded at the time.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
That's a good question. I got several calls over the last couple of weeks. We had a lot of rain at certain parks and specifically Kaufman Road and Polo Road. And we have a lot of problems with after group usage, especially at Polo Road. And I preach this, and if you look in the notes, I've said this probably... And I preach this, and if you look in the notes, I've said this probably. Twelve times in a year, which would be every month. But. We've got to figure out a way to. Keep people off those fields, especially when they're wet. And I know we have rangers and. There's a sheriff's office for drive-bys. But we gotta figure something out, because, you know. There's already a lot of usage going on from our. Users. And then on top of that. When it's raining. It's creating problems. And I just like for you guys to. You know, really try to figure out a plan for using our rangers or whomever to. Really monitor whether we put cameras up. You know, those, you know, those. Cameras to keep an eye on things that you can look at it remotely. Might be the ticket. I don't know, but maybe a plan could be put in place. And then the other thing I was just thinking, like, I got called. About Kaufman Road. Fields had locks on them. And. Then it said, you know, for field maintenance and usage. And I think that the group that was, whoever complained about it, I don't know for sure. I don't think, I think that their license for that time had expired already. So. Whether it's like that or not, I'm just wondering if we should look into some sort of system. Countywide or, you know, whoever the athletic directors are for those complexes. Maybe there's an app that we can create. Technology-wise down the road. That this person in charge could say, field's open, field's closed. And it could be updated by those people. But maybe there's a better way just to communicate with all of our. Users or even. The actual end users, you know, the parents and whatnot, but maybe there's something we can look into. In regards to that. So, anyway, thanks.
Madam. Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
If y'all are finished there, I wanted to make you aware that Representative Jermaine Johnson is here and has requested to speak. In talking with him. That would be an open session. Issues. It would require amending the agenda to allow. The elected official to speak, and then I would suggest you do it at this point. Prior to the other presentation, so that he might speak and. And leave, you know.
You want him to do it before the community relations manager's report?
I would, just to, you know. Allow him to come as a, and, but it would require amending the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to let Representative Johnson speak at this time.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Representative Johnson?
Over there.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman. My distinguished colleagues up here, thank y'all so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak to y'all and, hey, family, hey, y'all. You know, I wanted to come out here, and it's not just as a representative. I'm coming out here just to speak on behalf of the many. Phone calls that I've gotten from community members, phone calls that I've gotten from employees all across this county. And just to kind of, you know, address some of the concerns that they have had, that I've had, that I've heard. I welcome the opportunity to return at a later date to meet with you all, to kind of discuss some of these issues, you know, behind closed doors or whatever we need to do. But just the thing that I would like to get out is that we must make a decision about where we're going as an agency. Whether that's, you know, whoever you're going to hire as an executive director or what you're gonna do. At this point, you know, it is far past time, you know, the previous executive director is no longer here. But I personally feel that we should have had a backup plan or a plan B before we did what we did here. And I think that we're suffering from that now with all the phone calls that I'm getting from community members and employees. With, in regards to where we're going. I think we could do a lot better. You know, we took a long time. There's some things that not only myself is feeling, but we have addressed this as a delegation. And we're talking about some different solutions as to what we're going to do going forward. When we will be, we'll be meeting in the next month or so as a delegation to talk about the path forward for this agency. Because we know that this agency here, you all are parks and recreation. You play a humongous part in our communities with our young people, our seniors as well. And this is a very, very important agency that's here. I think that, you know, we can't take it lightly. We can't take it lightly with where we're going as an agency. And instead of getting into the minutia and all that, like I said, I welcome an opportunity to come back and sit down with y'all and go into further detail. In terms of what I've been told, what I've been hearing, and, you know, because on a weekly basis that I'm getting phone calls or letters or emails or something. From individuals all across this agency, all across this county, not just, like I said, not just employees, but community members, other elected officials. One of the things I wanted to bring up is, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, she keeps new, she wanted to be here tonight, she couldn't be here, she had another meeting. But she had a specific question asking about Green Lakes, and there's supposed to be a park that's built in Green Lakes, and that there's money in the bond for this. And as she sent this email, she also forwarded me the email that there's money in the bond for this, but there's been no movement on this. The last executive director was supposed to make this a part of her capital improvement plan. But now she's no longer here, so now we are looking at the agency to kind of pick this up and move this project along. But again, you know, I just, I want to say thank you all so much for allowing me the time to speak. I would love to come back at the next meeting to sit down and speak with you all, you know, in more detail. And you all just let me know your availability. But thank you so much for hearing me this evening.
Thank you. We will look into the Green Lakes project. I think that was quite a few years ago that money was set aside for bonds. I know it hasn't been in the last five years, so it had to be maybe.
We'll get a report on that.
It's.
It's been a while, right? We'll now have the report, the community relations manager.
Good evening, Commissioners. We're continuing to enrich lives and connect the communities. Since our previous board meeting, we've. Hosted several Halloween. Fun-filled events for families. One event, the Pumpkin Prowl was held on October the twenty-eighth at Polo Road Park. We had over seventy people in attendance. You can see the fire truck was there. And Richland County Sheriff Department, the nine-foot sheriff was there, and they had food vendors as well. We also hosted the Great Pumpkin Five K Walk and Kids Fun Run, and that was held at the Kaufman Road Park. They had approximately forty runners, and that was held on October the twenty-ninth. Also, on October the twenty-ninth, at St. Andrews Park, they hosted a teen night out. That's when teenagers would come out to the park for free and enjoy activities that are set up for them. They had chair volleyball. They generally participated in basketball, but they had chair volleyball on this night. So, I'm quite sure that they enjoyed that change. The Fifth Annual Halloween Candy Chase was held on Halloween night, which was October the thirty-first at Blifwood Park. And they had over a hundred and fifty people in attendance. And everyone enjoyed that activity. We also had a Halloween candy pickup at Polo Road Park. And I was surprised to see that they hosted two Halloween events, but that is not a typo. They actually had two Halloween events, and they had over. Thirty to forty participants to pick up candy at Polo Road Park. Lisa Smart hosted costumes and karaoke, and that was held at Bluff Road Park, also on Halloween. And that event was geared toward our seniors. The seniors received trick-or-treat bags. And Lisa always hosts one of those events, and we had over fifty-five seniors to participate in the costumes and karaoke. The Veterans Brunch and Health Fair was held at Gunnison Ferry Adult Activity Center on November the tenth. There were forty to fifty veterans in attendance of this event, and they had over nine vendors. Providing resources and activities for the veterans. On this past Saturday, we'd like to say personally thank you to County Council, Jessica Mackey. For sponsoring our giveaway, Thanksgiving giveaway, and we also like to say thank you to County Council for his support, Mr. Derek Q. That came out to assist. But this past Saturday at North Springs, the agency, along with County Council, gave out over a hundred turkeys. We started this event at ten AM. Upon my arrival, along with some additional staff at seven forty-five, people were already in line. It took us less than forty-five minutes, and a hundred and twelve turkeys were issued to the community at North Springs Park. One of our employees said, as she was giving out the tickets, that one of the patrons said she didn't know how she was gonna feed her family. For Thanksgiving, and she was literally in tears that we were. Affording her an opportunity to receive a free turkey. So, we also like to say thank you to Commissioner Singleton. You can see her picture there. She not only came out, but she brought her daughter as well. To issue out baskets. So, we'd like to say thank you. Also, this Saturday. RCRC hosted at Upper Richland, the Turkey Trot Five K. And that was held at Lindrick Golf Course, and we had over twenty-two runners to participate in the Turkey Trot this year. Also, this Saturday, as you can see that we were busy this Saturday. We had staff members to go out to McGrady Training Center, which is located right off of six oh one. In Eastover. And they participated with over a hundred teams from South Carolina, North Carolina, and Georgia, but they had. Activities, and would like to say thank you to Commissioner Anderson for inviting us out. But it's always impactful, and we wish we had more staff that could attend, but with all the events that we had going on. We appreciate Ira and his team for showing up. Upcoming events, and one that's not listed. We have Richland County Player of the Year that's going to be held here at the Adult Activity Center on Park Lane on December the first at six thirty. We invite all of the commissioners to come out and support. Also, during that week, we have another busy week. We have the RCRC runway takeover that's gonna be held at the Gunnison Ferry Adult Activity Center. The following day on December the second. Another event happening on December the third, which was gonna be held at St. Andrews Park, is Breakfast with Santa. Silver and Gold Holiday Ball will be held at Bluff Road Park on December the twelfth. Holiday Celebration Drive Through will be at Hopkins Park on December the fourteenth. And we'll have Santa Run, another five K walk and kids run held at Upper Richland on December the seventeenth. And we'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you so much for that wonderful report. I don't think the community realize how much work we do in the communities. So. We just need to keep doing what we do. And I would like a copy of the December upcoming events, so I can go to as many as I possibly can. And one, when I was invited to, it's in December the twelfth, I believe. The one at Bluff Road Park, is that on it listed? Right. Right, okay. And I noticed that County Council, they put out a monthly report, and they have also been listing the activities that we've been doing. So, we're getting some kind of a recognition a little bit. Right, right. I appreciate that. Anybody else having comments?
Great work.
Great work. Thank you all so much. I know a lot of people have been at multiple events over the weekend, coming early, staying late. That was evidenced on Saturday morning, very early. It was chilly too, so thank you so much. It is, I much appreciate it. And I'm wishing you all a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving.
If I can, I wanted to, just for a second. Wanted to make sure that we give Ira his team this award. They did an outstanding job Saturday. I mean, it was. For the first time, South Carolina hosted an invitation that consisted of youth challenge from North Carolina, Georgia, and South Carolina. And they were very professional. They did an excellent job. And was a key to the overall success of that event. So, I want to make sure that they get this award presented to them by part, to the, by the youth challenge. But they're excellent. I mean, it was immaculate. They did it fantastic. And at a last-minute notice. Last-minute notice, they adjusted and manned. Y'all showed out. Y'all, you'll get an invitation next time.
Thank you. We'll make sure that he sees that.
And now we'd go, I need a motion to go on executive session. Madam Chair, I make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Good evening. It was no action taken in executive session. Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Hold on, there's no action.
I'm sorry.
No, no, we just said that no action was taken. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did.
My bad. I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. Yep. Second.
You got it. You have a question?
I was asking, did we come out as executive session?
We've come out of executive.
We came out of executive session. I commented that no action was taken.
Okay.
Okay. And then I'd like to make another, we're out of executive session. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. This is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
No.
It's only four of us. You have to say yes.
Tell me. See y'all.
Commissioner Lindsey?
I agree. I agree. I agree.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
She's gone.
Okay. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.